Praise for the pledge of allegiance.
Welcome, everyone. Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session where we discussed, where we had boards and commissioners interviews and dealt with personnel matters. At the beginning of this meeting, we will be having a presentation. Chief?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're here for a presentation for the Police Department. As you know, Chief Dean Logan retired in October of last year when I was promoted to the position of chief. In the month of July, we hired a new officer and we hired a promoted patrol officer to the position of sergeant. The Police Department had one position left, which was the number two in command with the Police Department. A little backstory, in January of 25, I started a six-week trial period with the three sergeants that were interested in the position. That was Sergeant Jessica Whiteside, that was Sergeant Jeffrey Stitch, and Sergeant Scott Jones. All three of them did a tremendous job, but I had to make the tough decision. And coming through evaluating the six-week process, it was clear that Jessica was the choice. Little background on Jessica, she started here with the Police Department in 2015. She had about five years prior experience with other police departments in Montgomery County. During her time here, from 2015 to 2020, Jessica was the first female motor patrol officer we've had in the Police Department. She eagerly looked for extra tasks, at which time she became one of the main field training officers that we have that have trained several of the officers that we have today. In 2020, Jessica wanted to be a sergeant, so she went through the process and she was successful. In 2020, we also started National Night Out. Jessica's the driving force behind that. She also began in 2020 as part of the department's hiring and selection process, which she has been involved with everybody that we've hired since 2021 until 2025. So she has the experience. She also completed her bachelor's degree in public safety administration in August of this year, and she has also attended the Northwestern School of Police Staff in Command. With all that resume that I just jammed into in about two minutes, it is my decision that the board promote Sergeant Jessica Whiteside to the position of lieutenant this evening. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
We also have, need a motion to approve the contract that we have?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And now we'll be swearing in our new lieutenant, Jessica Whiteside, by the Honorable Judge Matt Weintraub.
Judge?
All right, please repeat after me. Aye, Jessica Whiteside.
Aye, Jessica Whiteside.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the ordinances of Doylestown Township.
And the ordinances of Doylestown Township.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And enforce the law.
And enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color, sex.
Color, sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Aye, Jessica Whiteside.
Aye, Jessica Whiteside.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties of lieutenant.
The duties of lieutenant.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
do so now. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
How you doing? See ya.
So happy for you.
Lieutenant. Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Smooth news.
Bye.
Our second presentation for tonight is related to the retirement of one of our public works road crew members, Rudy Getter. This is in, Rudy has been working at the township since 2013, and we would like to recognize his upcoming retirement on the 30th of September. He's a CDL driver, and in 2015, he was recognized with his work on the construction of the band shell in Central Park. He's known to be loyal, responsible, a hard worker, and always willing to help others. We'd like to wish Rudy all the best in his retirement and hope he enjoys spending time with his wife, family, and traveling. And we have a plaque to present to him. Thank you. We'll accept it. We'd like to thank him again for all of his hard work. Is there any public comment on agenda items? All right, hearing none. Announcements, the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, October 21st at 7:00 PM. The Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors and Finance Committee will hold a budget work session on Thursday, October 9th at 5:00 PM. Doylestown Township Administrative Office will be closed on Monday, October 13th in observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day. The Thompson Performing Arts Series at CNN Amphitheater continues this Wednesday, September 17th with Jesse Garan, that's our Elvis singer, and Thursday, September 18th with Rock This Towns Orchestra, 50s and 60s style music, both starting at 7:00 PM. Please go to doylstownrec.org for updates or check on our social media, they'll give you the up-to-date information on those events. We also have one of our most popular events, the Fall Food Truck Festival on September 21st. It starts at 1:00 PM and goes till 5:00 PM at Central Park with live music from the Cherry Lane Band. Doylestown Township Parks and Recreation invite you to join us at our annual golf outing on October 6th. This year's event will take place at the Commonwealth National Golf Club. Spaces are available. Please call the office at (215) 348-9915 to sign up today. And keep up to date with township news and events by signing up with our e-newsletter on doylstownpa.org. The e-news is sent out every Friday at 4:00 PM and it's full of wonderful information. Onto minutes approval. Have we all had an opportunity to read the regular meeting minutes?
Move for their approval.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And everybody had a chance to read the budget work session minutes?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment about the budget minutes. Specifically, when I asked about the cameras for the courts, just so it's clear, I was questioning why they weren't included, as well as my concern of there being a safety and liability issue. The way it's worded is a little confusing, so I'd appreciate that. And I'm still waiting on an estimate of what the cost would be for that, for those security cameras.
Do I have a motion on the minutes themselves? I'll make the motion.
I just made the motion, didn't I?
All right.
Okay, so Madam Chair, are you saying you're ignoring my comment? I'm not quite sure, you're just making a motion.
Are you asking for a change in the minutes?
I'm asking for, and absolutely looking for, a change in the minutes.
I'm sorry, I thought you were just clarifying.
No, I'm actually looking for a change in the minutes.
What are you requesting?
I was looking for them to state that I specifically asked why the courts were not going to have cameras, what the cost would be for those cameras, and my concern about there being a safety and liability issue by not having cameras. And those three things were not mentioned in the minutes. Is there a problem with including that in the minutes?
I don't, well, I think.
I don't recall the conversation that clearly.
We could go back and listen to it, but I do recall, because I was very concerned, and I, like, as I mentioned, I still have yet to receive. I also asked some other items on here that were not mentioned.
So just to be clear, minutes are not word for word?
Aye, aye.
They are also, they're meant to document action items like votes and things like that, decisions that are made?
Jen, I understand the use of minutes, but my point is, my words, after the loss we had, words are really important to me, and my words.
Sorry, can you clarify?
My words are important, so when I ask a question in a budget meeting or somewhere, I'd appreciate my words reflecting my questions. I've also feeling, and there was a question about transparency, and I also want to talk about that as well, since we're talking about the minutes. My frustration was when we had that budget meeting, I was told to be conversational. I asked in advance of the budget meeting for the supporting materials, and I was told I would receive them the day of.
Yes.
I went to the meeting at 4:30 because I've never heard of going to a budget meeting and not having the materials. It'd be like going to a book club to talk about a book without reading it. So my point is, I am concerned because there is a transparency issue in that we should be having conversations about the information in front of us not being told. And I'm two weeks later, and I've still, I gave very pointed questions. I asked about debt service, I asked about cameras, and I wasn't going to go there, but I'm frustrated because I do feel that we're not representing our constituents if we can't be honest and have that information. So when you say this is a generalization in these minutes, that's your interpretation. I think we're not being, we're not being fair to those.
Well, in all transparency, just for the public to know, in all transparency, we have these meetings, they're televised, so if you want to see a word for word, it's easy to get.
You absolutely can. I'm looking to have my words corrected in the minutes.
Let me have a moment, I'll let you speak. So we do have the videos available, they're archived, you can see them at any point, and you can watch them in their entirety. The minutes are there to show actions that are done, so it won't have all of Supervisor Santa Cecilia's comments, as it wouldn't have all of mine, it wouldn't have all of Barbara's, it wouldn't have everything from all of the supervisors. So it isn't an individual thing, it's just, generally speaking, we don't put quotes in there, that's just not how budgets and minutes work.
I understand, I think safety, I think safety and liability are major responsibility of a supervisor, which is why I'm being insistent on including that in the minutes. If you don't want to include it, I just will not vote for the minutes, that's fine. I just wanted to ask if there was a problem including that.
So in addition, I just want to, I want to address a couple of the things. Our budget workshops have been occurring the same exact way for the length of time I've been on the board, and I believe Supervisor Lyons had expressed similar comments on her entire time on the board. We receive information at the time of those meetings because that is when they're introduced to us. Our staff is very familiar, so they can walk us through the details of these budgets. We have multiple meetings, so we have plenty of, plenty of opportunity to not only go over that information, but to study, research, and do our homework, and that's been the way it has been for, I imagine, decades.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that, Jen, because I knew you were going to say that tonight. And in the past, when we started, we were sent the information in advance, and we were told, if you have any questions, please ask your staff in advance so we don't embarrass them, so we have questions. I would have asked that exact question to Dave in advance, how much is it going to cost? Just like I had been asking my last meeting, how much are we over in the contingency? And I was told, I'm not sure, I'll have to talk to finance and get back to me, and then I found out we're $161,000 over. So I do feel there's an issue because the information that we used to receive in advance is not being given, there's no opportunity to process it. So a conversational budget meeting is something I've never heard of, and I don't think it's a good practice.
Well, you have heard of it.
I even questioned, I can ask our counsel, is that, is that a sunshine issue by not getting this information in advance? I was actually told by Ed Edenbach, I couldn't have the information, I showed up at 4:30 because I went into look at the numbers and the information in advance. And he told someone on your staff, don't give it to her. I was sitting right there. So I will tell you.
Who said that?
I asked Ed.
Who are you accusing of telling the staff not to give it to you?
I asked Ed, can I have the information? And he said, no. I showed up at 4:30.
You just said somebody told them to not give it to you.
I asked Ed.
Who are you accusing?
I was sitting across from Ed, and I said, Ed, can I have that information? I'd like to look at the materials, because they had all the materials on the table. And he said, no, you may not. So I do, I'm, in, at this point, I don't have, being the only person of my party on this floor, I know my voice has continued to be shut down, both in the way you write the minutes, the way I speak, and it's really important that people understand that we represent everybody who are on this board. And when I ask those questions, it's not a me versus you, it's all those people that are sending me questions and asking me, can you inquire about this? And I know you feel the same way, Jen, I think you and I are very similar in a lot of ways, we're passionate about serving, but my point is, I just don't think that this process was very honest, how it was handled.
But we didn't make any decisions, we weren't making any decisions at that workshop.
You can't have a conversation about something.
May I finish? May I finish? We were just giving an introduction to what we would be going through over the next several budget sessions. There wasn't, to make this political, Nancy, is really wrong, because you're implying that there's not transparency here. And that's just not the case. This is the way it has been done over the past years that you've been on this board.
It's not, we have always received the material in advance. Judy, you are a new supervisor, if anything, you came in on your first night and nominated a brand-new solicitor, who I didn't even know their name until they came in, so I don't, I.
All right, so this appears to be more of a.
I'm not here to argue, my point is, I just want to.
Larger discussion.
It is a larger discussion, but my point is, Jen.
Madam Chairman, there's a motion on the floor, and the second, I call a question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Correspondence, we received a request from the Central Bucks Senior Center for a donation. Stephanie, would you like to speak on that?
Certainly, I did speak with Mr. Fox, I've also communicated with a couple of my colleagues who also received the letter. Most everyone is just taking it under advisement at the present time and looking at possibly incorporating their request for $5,000 from the various municipalities that they serve in their 2026 budgets. To date, most have never received a request. Most of the funds that the Senior Center receives are from fundraising and fees for their operations. They are looking at some large expenses to the building that was built in 1982, such as roof replacements and some air circulation handlers, et cetera. And they are reaching out to the 11 or so municipalities they serve. So we can look to put this in with the numbers for the budget as we do for DART, as we do for the teen center at the YMCA, and the SPCA. If the board's so inclined, I can also, we can continue to monitor what our neighbors are doing as well. So just for information at this point in time.
Okay, any thoughts?
I'm sorry, so you're.
My question would be, if they're asking for money, it would be prudent for us to ask for any kind of operation, operational expenses, their incomes and expenses, to see kind of what their plans are for this exactly.
And I did ask them for a copy of their budget and information, he did not have that available, but we can follow up and ask him to send it.
Thank you.
All right.
I would be inclined to, I know when we talked, there are people that go there and they do offer those meals for $2.50 or $2 that I think with all the generosity we do with a lot of other organizations, I'd be comfortable to give that donation.
Mr. Fox did tell me the money they collect goes back to the Bucks County area agents, aging with the lunches. I didn't realize that. I learned that today.
I think it'd be prudent if we see the, some kind of backup for.
Yeah, the numbers.
Some kind of budget backup.
It's a wonderful place for our seniors to go with a lot of good resources, but I think that that would be doing our due diligence, so.
Yeah, they are asking 11 municipalities for essentially $55,000, so I would like just some clarity of what the plan is for that.
That's a good point, Dan.
I know, I know quite a few people, I think they're, they only charge like $3 a class, and it's $25 to.
No, I agree that, I think they're a noble goal, I just feel like, for due diligence to just follow up with.
That sounds good. They don't have a deadline on it, right?
Is there a timeline when they're looking for that, Stephanie?
No, they would be looking in the 2026 timeframe, they know all the municipalities are in their budget process right near, now. He did indicate, as I said previously, the improvements with roof and circulators and things like that are probably in the $150,000 range. $5,000 from the various municipalities is probably going to only generate about $65,000, so I'm sure they'll be doing a lot of fundraising as well.
Right, I mean, they mentioned basically, they're just trying to keep their lights on, their HVAC running, so, because they have an aging building, so.
All right. Okay, we'll have them come back to us with that information, we can put it back on the agenda to discuss. The next, the next correspondence that we received was a request from a resident to change the time limit for fireworks to 10:00 PM. When I read this request, it seemed like Labor Day was one of the issues that this resident had, people using fireworks past 10:00 PM. But when I read our ordinance, it appeared that that was in violation of our ordinance, that only two occasions do we allow it to go past 10:00 PM, that is July 4th weekend and New Year's Eve. So that was my understanding, that it sounds to me more like this resident needs to reach out to our law enforcement or, I guess, the township when these things happen.
Really difficult, because their folks have fireworks and it's not even a holiday.
It's difficult.
And you call the police and they can't find where it came, where they're coming from, it's just disrespect that's all around.
It is, and I don't think, we wouldn't be able to change our ordinance to fix the problem that this resident has with it, and I am completely sympathetic, I have one of those dogs that can't stand thunderstorms and fireworks, so I'm sympathetic, but I think as it stands, it says that you can't have fireworks past 10:00 PM on most holidays. So. Okay. Okay. No other discussion on that matter? Solicitor report?
Nothing to report this evening.
Township engineer?
Nothing to report tonight.
Chief?
Yes, I have a couple things. First off, our next scam and fraud seminar is scheduled for September 18th at 1:30 PM at the Central Bucks Senior Center, 700 North Shady Retreat Road. This is free of charge. It's usually about two hours, you'll have members of the Police Department, mainly our detectives there, and they will go over the many different types of scams and fraud attempts that we're seeing over the last couple of months. Secondly, I want to talk about some e-bikes. We have seen a lot of inquiry about this, and I just, we have put something out in our Crime Watch page and Facebook page, but I know it could be a kind of an overload of information at times because we're trying to put a lot of information into a very small space. So I'm just going to hit a couple of the Cliff Notes this evening. If anybody has any questions on anything about e-bikes, please call the Police Department, we will be able to give you all the information in any format that you need. E-bikes are, the main important thing with those is, they have to have pedals. If they don't have pedals, it is not an e-bike. And if you have an e-bike, you must be 16 years old to operate that e-bike, has a maximum weight of 100 pounds, maximum power of 750 watts, and a top speed of 20 miles an hour. If it's anything other than that, it's not appropriate. Electric scooters, those, they have no age limit, but they can only be operated on private property because technically they would fall under a definition of a vehicle, and in that vehicle, it needs headlights, turn signals, brake lights, registration, stuff like that. They don't come with those, you can't put them on there. It's private property only, but there's no age limit. And if you have kids that are on them, they need to have helmets on just for their safety. The big one here is, the state is classifying them as e-dirt bikes. They have no pedals on them, they are very fast. The two ways to figure out which one you have is, A, the absence of pedals, and two, there's a sticker on there that says, "Off-road use only." If that, if your bike meets that criteria, that is private property only, that is not to be on any public roadway, private bike and hike path, park, nothing. And the big thing with these is, those that are riding those and can get caught with them, they're subject to forfeiture, which that means that we can seize them, turn them over to the DA's office, and they will sell them at auction. It's not because we want to do that, we, the Police Department, we are very good at educating people, hey, this is what's going on, you can't have this, because a lot of people don't know what they have. They just think it's a bike, it's electric, that's what it is. There's a lot of different classifications with that, which is causing confusion. The biggest thing is, people are getting hurt on these things. They're going so fast, and the kids are so young, they get used to that speed, and they don't know, the parents don't know, and next thing you know, the police are involved with an unfortunate situation. So if anybody has any questions on any of this stuff, please call the Police Department, we will gladly provide you with all the information, whatever you need at any time, any of the officers can do it. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'd just like to chime in, my thanks for what you posted on the Township site, it's a really informative flyer, that's two pages that taught me a fair amount of pieces about not just electric scooters, but the hoverboards, all those pieces as well, it was really well done, and I want to thank you and your department for that.
Thank you. It took about two days, that's how easy it was to find.
Chief, do you have data on the injuries and like, so we should know?
I know, I think it was Township was maybe have referred, or reached out to Stephanie, there was like a, two young kids that were injured like on an electric scooter, and I mean, I think they required helmets, there's a $25 fine, it's something we should be mindful of moving forward.
I do not have wide-spanning information. It took about two days. That's how easy it was to find.
Ow?
Chief, do you have data on the injuries and like, so we should know? I know there's been, I think it was township was maybe have referred, reached out to Stephanie. There was like a, two young kids that were injured like on a electric scooter. And I mean, I think they required helmets. There's a $25 fine. Something we should be mindful of moving forward.
I do not have wide spanning information on that, on injuries and vehicles involved in accidents like that. I know there was other incidents in the Central Bucks area that are coming to light with things that, you know, as you start asking other departments, they start explaining some things. So it's, it's becoming something that the police departments across the state are actually starting to really look at because the amount of e-bikes and that are, like essentially it's booming and everybody is, is driving them, riding them. And it's now where five, six years ago, we didn't have this. Now we have it and that's where the law was always there, but we had, nobody really had any reason to look into it because you didn't have the influx of this type of vehicle in the communities, but now you do. So the statistical information is naturally going to start climbing because with anything else, you have more people, you're going to have more incidents.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that's, for us so far, we've been okay, but that doesn't, you know, I don't know how long that's going to last.
So people can buy e-bikes online, but they can also buy them through local retailers? Are we also, maybe could we, at the EAC, at the, I'm sorry, the Bike Hike meeting today, we talked about potentially posting something like this at the electric bike store in town or possibly just the bike stores in town?
I have no problem doing that. We have it in a digital form. I can certainly print it out and as many copies as they need, we'll get them out to them.
Because I could see parents buying an e-bike for their child and not knowing that, you know, 16, they can't be riding that e-bike, right?
Hundred percent.
So they, you know, they're buying them for their 12-year-old. So I think getting the information out is in, like if, I don't know if how you, how you are on TikTok might be in a good format for you, chief.
I'm not a post-heron social media, no.
You're not doing a dance on TikTok.
No, no.
But I think it's as many ways as we can get the information because people are going to be buying them online and they don't have this information. So I really appreciate your, your efforts in, in doing this. The other part is, is the, you know, can they be on the road or can they be on the hike, hike bike path, right? And if you're taking, I think, an e-bike, right, with pedals on it, can be on a bike and hike path, but there should be some etiquette with that, right? So you're not going above 20 miles an hour and that you maybe have a bell, you alert somebody who's got a dog on a leash so they're not getting, as we heard today, clotheslined, you know? So it's, there's, I think an etiquette portion to this too that people should be aware of.
I'm looking forward to the Bike Hike, is it Bike Hike that's talking about all these things? I'm looking forward to them coming up with all these suggestions. I think that's great to go to the stores and look at all of these things.
It's a great first step, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, Director of Operations.
Okay. Good evening. My first item I have it is that time of year again is the 2025-26 Sodium Chloride Road Salt Co-Stars Participation Contract. Back in March, in my memo indicated that we notified the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of General Services, that we would tend to participate in the purchase of road salt from their contract. At that time, I notified them that we would averaging, requesting about 1,000 tons per the contract. We have a minimum purchase of 600 tons and we can maximum, with a maximum purchase of 1,400 tons. And that price is 8146 per ton, and that was awarded to Cargill Incorporated. We were purchasing from Cargill from the past couple of years. The contract actually started in 2021, was it extended to this year into 20731 and 2026 through the Department of General Services. The board does not have to do anything more than just acknowledge our participation in the road salt program, please.
Okay, it's acknowledged.
Acknowledged.
Great, thank you. I'm going to have Mr. Torpey address the road program change order number two.
So I'm here tonight to ask for your approval for change order number two. When we went onto Country Brook Drive to do our milling and subsequent paving, the road profile was a lot thinner than we had hoped. So when we scratched it, we realized we needed to build the road up a little bit. So we came back with some 19-millimeter base course and then the wearing course on top. So now we have the road pretty much to the standards within the township and should last for a pretty long time. But this change order is in the amount of $24,300 to accommodate those additional work that needed to be done on Country Brook Dive. So I'm looking for approval for that tonight.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next item is our, our Green Light Go grant that we received from PennDOT back in, it's, it's indicated 2023, that's when we applied for the grant, and we were notified subsequently that we received it. It is for flashing yellow improvements for various intersections indicated in your memo that I wrote to you, or actually from, indicating Panone's memo to Stephanie and the proposal for their engineering work. This is an 80/20 match for this work and Panone's Design Services for this work is estimated in Panone's proposal at $39,600. I missed for the board's approval for that item. Maybe we want to do them together separately. There's another Green Light Go grant, so do you want to do them separately? Okay, so asking for the board's approval for the flashing yellow improvement Green Light Go grant. Engineering award.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So the township, there's a lot of other municipalities that are part of this contracting for this engineering work, correct? Do they also pick up a share of the engineering cost?
Not on this, this, this project, this grant is not, there's no cost share from the municipalities on this, on this one. This one is strictly 100% ours.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Second Green Light Go is what is indicated is detection improvements. There's two intersections, Edison-Furlong Road and Pebble Hill Road and Ferry Road and Lime Kilm Road. Basically, again, we received the grant. It's an 80/20 breakdown. We're responsible for 20%. The Panone's proposals approved the engineering services. The total for Panone's fees is $30,000. I'm asking for the board's approval.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is preliminary basin analysis for MS4 Basin retrofit program. These three basins were identified in the 2025 budget. They were shown in our capital expenditure forms. One basin is located in Doylestown Knoll, one in Doylestown Hunt, and one in Doylestown Lee. Basically, the way Gilmore has broken down the proposal into by, by each basin, so it's in three parts and then there are subparts to each basin analysis. The total cost for the proposal is $54,750. This is a time of material proposal. For example, the Doylestown Knoll basin, the first part is infiltration assessment of the basin subgrade for $32,000, $3,250. So each basin will be assessed for infiltration first. If it's determined that they're operating properly, we may not have to go any further, but if we do, there's also scope and fee in here for survey and for, then basically for engineering services to engineer any retrofits or anything that we need to do to those basins. So again, the total proposal is for $54,750 and they're broken down on a time and material basis for each basin.
You just said that perhaps there wouldn't need to be any attention to...
Correct.
...the basin.
At a minimum, we need to do infiltration testing on all three.
So the $54,000 is what we need to do as a minimum?
That's going to be our maximum for the engineering fees.
Maximum.
For the engineering fees outlined by Panone.
I'm confused now.
Or Gilmore, I'm sorry.
What does the $54,750 get us?
There's three basins.
Get that.
Okay.
But not, but they may not all need that kind of attention.
Correct.
So we're approving money, $54,750 for them to do something they may not be, have to do.
Correct. What I don't want to do is come back to you and say, we looked at all the infiltration testing and I need you to approve now the next phase of their engineering, which is, let's say, let's go, just do one as an example. Doylestown Knoll basin, they're going to go in and basically do infiltration tests and determine if it's operating properly. If it's not, then they're going to do topographic survey and existing features plan, and then they're going to do the engineering to mitigate any problems in the infiltration. So it's broken down in three parts. If they determine that the infiltrate, it's infiltrating properly, there's no need to do survey or engineering. And that's the same for each. But I don't, what I don't want to do is say, oh, well, we did analysis on all three basins and all three need further analysis and have to wait and come back to you. So I'm asking is that you approve them to the maximum and then allow us as the staff to determine and give them authorization if they need to, to go to the next step? Is that maybe more clear?
So, so the motion is that there will be no more, it will be up to $54,750.
The three basins.
You know they're going to spend all that money.
Well, it's to be...
Award it and they'll spend it.
If you don't want that.
Maybe it's more prudent that they have to justify the work. I don't mean to, I think we don't want to award money that they will obviously spend may not have to. I mean, I'm not distrusting Gilmore, but that's just human nature.
Well, that's the, that's the results of this. So if you would like only to, to basically award the infiltration assessment of the three basins at this time, then we can do that. But then I'm going to have to, if we do find out that they have to be mitigated.
Okay.
We're going to have to come back and ask for more, more money at that time.
That's just my thought.
Is, is there any urgency once you get the initial analysis that you would have to wait another month for a board meeting?
Correct.
Is there like a timeline?
That doesn't affect like the timeline of the project so much, right?
Like, no, we've completed our, we've completed the, our permit requirements for the first five-year permit that we have. It's just that, seem to be easier just have it all there and say you have awarded, we'll get a notice, proceed only for the infiltration testing and then have to come back. But if you want me to come back and ask for this next parts, we can do that.
So what's, what's an amount of that we're...
That looks like it would be around $9,750 to do the infiltration assessment basin subgrade, $3250 for each basin, is that correct, Dave?
$32,050 for each.
$3,250.
Yes, $3,250, I'm sorry.
And if you have three basins, I'm calculating it at $9,750.
Yes, correct.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor?
I have a question. So that, this is required for the MS4 program, right? This is a state requirement. We have to do this, right? Okay. Yep, I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the motion is for just the basin infiltration testing?
Correct.
Okay.
$9,750 for infiltration testing.
We'll check.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
My final item is the Community Recreation Center SKEPTON Construction Change Order Number 15. As you know, there was discussion about the sport court fencing, that it was originally, it was our desire to have black vinyl coated fencing. The specifications and the cut sheets were, were reviewed and approved for galvanized. So we went back to SKEPTON and asked them to give us a price to go to the black vinyl coated fencing for the courts. We had some deducts as part of it and that was listed and provided in the change order with the additions. I was informed that there would be a $1,500 total add. In other words, for the change to do, go from galvanized to black voted, black coated vinyl, it's only $1,500. SKEPTON went back to the vendor and said, let's just call it $0. So it's a, this is a change order for $0 to go from galvanized to black coated vinyl. Just need the board's approval. We've already notified them of our desire to want that. It's already ordered, so that's going to happen. So I just need to do the paperwork.
All right, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I got to say, it's my second favorite type of change order.
No, mine.
Zero dollar.
Thank you.
Can I mention one item? We're still, we're still working on the, the site changes. There was a credit in the site changes of around $19,000 for the, the fencing that got moved into this change order. So that will go up. We're work, still working on them. We actually talked to the SKEPTON today and they're providing some backup and edits to that because we're kind of going back and forth on numbers and quantities and things. So that will go up, but it's still at the same, as remember the budget work session, I kind of said we had the site change orders plus the courts. I still showed you those numbers. I don't foresee that they're going to go above what I already brought to you at the budget work session as well.
Great.
Okay?
Do we have a, a estimated, we still talking the end of or the beginning of October for the courts?
No, unfortunately that, that is delayed. There's a delay in ordering that material, so it's been, we're told three weeks. It's already been a week, so since they've ordered it, so that's where I, I don't have any change in schedule yet. Once I get it, I'll ask for that.
Could you send an email, let us know? Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I'll ask for the schedule update. So that is a little bit of delay there, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Assistant Township Manager, anything?
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Township Manager?
I just have one item. The Fleet Department has asked that we send vehicle 2003 Crown Vic to auction, looking for the board's authorization.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stephanie, can I?
Just add for the Crown Vic.
Stephanie, can I ask, what is the mileage that we typically put things to auction? It's just had 69,000 miles. I was just sort of curious.
I think that's, from what I've seen, that was normal for...
This was a former police vehicle?
This, this vehicle was like a 2006 or 2003.
2003, I was just, no, I was just more curious.
Usually for police vehicles, it's 100,000 miles.
Okay.
But that vehicle is way aged out. So we, I mean, we're using 100,000 miles in five years. That's from 2003, so.
Okay, I was just curious, I was just more curious. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, great. Supervisor, so my left to my right, I guess, Nancy?
Sure. Wanted to applaud the chief for your scam presentations. I know quite a few seniors who've attended those, so I appreciate that. I know someone who was personally impacted, so I appreciate that. Also wanted to mention the, hold on a minute, I'm picturing it. There was a, there's going to be a fire expo here October 8th, right?
8th or 9th, yeah, Central Park.
At Central Park? I'm sorry, I was trying to pull up the picture of it. One second, sorry. Jen, go ahead, let someone else go. I'm not, I'm not quite ready. I didn't, I, I lost my picture when I was, I hit my phone.
Okay, Jimmy, would you like to go?
Go ahead. Sure. In our executive session, we met with two candidates who were applying to the EAC and they were both excellent candidates, so I'd like to nominate Ginani Nixon and Michelle Angbert to the EAC.
Second and second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sure they'll be excited. It'll be a pleasure to work with them. They have a great background and as the liaison, it's really wonderful. Although I didn't get to be the liaison to this last meeting, my fellow supervisor, supervisor Lyons was able to enjoy their, the discussions that they have.
Wonderful.
But I was at the hike bike meeting this morning where we really did dig into the e-bike issues. It's a big concern. There is even a concern with potentially, I don't know how that would work, of trying to keep the e-bikes out on only the perimeter of the parks and not internally within the parks because there's so much pedestrian walking through the parks. But we know that might not be something that they can, that they can do. So that's, that's mostly what we, we talked about and you addressed a lot of it, chief, in your discussion today. The one thing I do want to reiterate is that we do share the roads in the whole state, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, meaning if you're a cyclist, a bicyclist, or a pedestrian, you have every right to be on the road as much as a car. much as a car. You get a four foot, cars should be able to go around you at four feet. And I can tell you myself as a bicyclist, most cars are very careful when they're passing me. And it's, it's, it's really refreshing. However, I could say this week, there was a time where I could have touched the car that was, that was riding next to me. And as a person without a vehicle, it is very, very scary to be in that situation. So I applaud our residents who do give the pedestrians and the cyclists safety on the roads and just something to bear in mind as you're driving. That's all I have.
Nancy?
Oh, sure. I just wanted to mention Central Box Fire Prevention Expo that's being hosted by the Doylestown Fire Company, October 4th from 4:00 to 8:00 at Central Park in our, in our building. So I think it's, there's going to be demos, there's food trucks and vendors. I think it's great education. I was recently at a firehouse and saw some things I used to, you know, of, of that re-education. I think it's important. So I just want to say thank you to the township for helping with that. I'll, if Stephanie were a part of that expo. So thank you. Dave, I will send a budget list, a formal email of the things that I was looking for that I didn't get from the budget from two weeks ago. Thank you for addressing the e-bikes. That's been on my list. I would be curious if you put anything out about helmets. I think, like you said, it's the 16 and under crowd, especially with them wearing the headphones. I had someone turn around right in front of me.
The chief did, does address it in his newsletter about the helmets too.
Right. Right. And that's it. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say one more thing. I just think it's important. So thank you for allowing me the table earlier, Jen. I just think it's important that we all remember that we're here and elected to represent everyone. We're here to share a diversity of thoughts. Civil discourse is okay. That's part of good governance. So I just, as a reminder to everyone, that that is our job and I will honor that.
Right. Supervisor Lyons?
Well, we cut a ribbon to the recreation center on, on last Sunday. The event was well-attended. I had the honor of serving as mistress of ceremony, I master ceremonies. Representative Brennan was there, State Senator, Steve Sanisario. There were over 400 people or more, I think we did the best we could count, who arrived after the ceremony, after the ribbon cutting, who just came to look, to look, see. Piccolo Trodatoria did the, did the food, which was plentiful and delicious. Everyone there, everyone was amazed and impressed with the, with the facility. It, we learned, we knew, but it was, it was articulated that this, that building had been 30 years in the making. And, and that was reiterated a few times, but I, I took note that there were past supervisors at this meeting, at the ribbon cutting, former State Senator Joseph Conti and former supervisor Jeff Williams. And also Ken Snyder was there together with Jen, Dan and Judy and myself. What I would like to do now is read into the record a letter that we, Stephanie received from Senator Conti, former Senator Conti. Stephanie, congratulations on the new Doylestown Township Community Recreation Center. The facility is so perfect in design scope and amenities. The basketball court brings back so many memories from my CB West basketball career. The community room is perfect and I love the kitchen. A great potential for future income through, through events. Jeff Williams and I drove through Central Park before and after the ribbon cutting. We never envisioned all the recreational opportunities that would be available to our residents and the community of Bucks County. The castle looks great and the permanent bandstand so much better than the trailer. Restrooms are a welcome addition, especially for a man of my age. More, more importantly, the feeling of community and township family that I left in 1993, it just came alive, not just came alive, but is thriving and enhanced by the boards and your leadership. In these desperate times or deplorable times, can't, one of those two words, in America, Doylestown Township remains a place of civility, tolerance and model of local, local government. Thank you Stephanie and the boards of supervisors so much for, for their work and their endeavor. I've never been, he'd never been more proud to, to have been in the township government. I wish you continued success. All the best. Joe Conti and Jeff Williams. Those two were in tandem, part of the purchase of Central Park and were on the, you know, were on the beginning of the planning of the community center. So 30 years hence, there we are. So thank you for letting me read that into the record. That's all I have.
That's wonderful. Dan?
All right. Speaking of our executive session and interviews we had, we interviewed Mr. Peter Sporranas to join our traffic advisory committee. So I'd like to make the motion to appoint him to the traffic advisory board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then gotta jump in on the community rec center thoughts and all that. That opening was me, probably the proudest day of being a supervisor for me so far. And I, I had a, a nice moment just sitting there in the gymnasium while standing and watching children and their families running around playing in the gymnasium and having that kind of realization that now it's actually a community center. For the past months, it's just been a building. It's been a shell. Now there's people using it. I had so many people, I'm sure, the rest of the staff and supervisors that were there, coming up to us and telling us all the things they couldn't wait to do with it, how they could get involved. They have all these plans and just how nice that felt to see the community want to immediately take ownership of this building because they are the ones that make it a community center and not just the building next door. So that's all I got.
That's really well said. I'm going to add my two cents on the ribbon cutting. The ceremony was lovely. We got to see the dignitaries that Barbara had mentioned and had some beautiful speeches, some touching moments. But I agree with Dan, standing there, watching the community come in and really make it the community, part of the community center was, was incredibly fulfilling. And I've only been at it for eight years. I can't even imagine how it warmed Barbara's heart and Stephanie's heart and everybody else that have, has worked on this project for so, so long. And I want to thank everybody who came out because it was incredible because you were there. I also want to mention that I went to Doylestown Hospital, has a clinic called the Ann Silverman Clinic. So many of us are aware of this clinic, but it is a, a free clinic in Doylestown Township. If you're unaware of what the work they do, they do amazing work for our community. And it was, it was eye-opening to see how many people come into this community that need medical care, that can't afford it, that don't have insurance and what a dire need that is at this time. And unfortunately, we're anticipating a greater need for a clinic like this. So I was, I'm just grateful that I was given the opportunity to have a tour there and get to know more about their mission. I also attended the pension advisory committee just recently. There we had the review of our performance on our pensions from Gerard and we had some discussions with our actuaries. And I keep saying this every time I report on the pension advisory committee, but that again was some work that we've done for years and years and years now. And we are finally coming to a point where we are in wonderful, healthy shape according to everybody that we talk to. We are head and shoulders above other municipalities. And it, it makes me so proud to know that we came this far on our pension. This is really an important part of a township, not, not usually the sexiest thing to talk about at these meetings. But for me, it's, it's, it's incredible because you save money now, you save so much more money by being a good fiduciary now with our pensions. And we've done just that with the support of our staff, our pension advisory committee and this board of supervisors. And I'd also like to congratulate our new lieutenant, Whiteside. Nothing warms my heart more than having, having these swearing in ceremonies. It's incredible and we're very lucky to have her. And that's all I have to report on today. We will be opening a public hearing now for the ordinance amending provisions of chapter 119 Parks and Recreation Areas, section 10 Drugs and Alcohol.
Thank you. Before the board of supervisors tonight is a proposed ordinance to amend chapter 119 Parks and Recreation Areas, section 10 Drugs and Alcohol. The proposed amendment would be amending the section that prohibits alcoholic beverages in the township parks and would make an exception for the community recreation center. Paragraph A of the section that is going to be amended would read that private events where alcoholic beverages are sold, distributed or consumed are permitted in the community recreation center only by the express written permission of the township manager and the Parks and Recreation Director and subject to the following requirements. The next eight sections deal with the various requirements for anyone wishing to have alcohol at an event in the community recreation center or the, if the township is, is holding one. I know that this ordinance has been discussed at prior meetings. We've made certain changes. I think that the draft ordinance that the board has in front of it now reflects all of those changes and all the work that went into this by staff and the board of supervisors.
Are there any comments? All right.
Someone in the, someone in the back?
Sure. Please come to the microphone and identify yourself and your municipality.
Mary Ann Davies, Doylestown Township. I have a question regarding the exception to the alcohol policy for the recreation center. Is this going to cause any additional costs for liability, liability insurance in the township? And how much?
No, it is not because the participant has to provide policies to the township and naming us as additional insureds and everything.
Can you come back to the podium, please?
Do you mean like the participants that sign the contract and have to provide their own-
If they're going to rent it, they're going to-
Own insurance rider?
Yes, they have to provide a certificate.
How much will be, it be, how much coverage will they have to get?
It looks like it's a general liability of a million for each occurrence bodily injury, minimum of $2 million aggregate.
Okay.
And then, so.
And that's bodily injury. What about any damages to the property or vehicles or anything like that?
I'll see, shall also include coverage of 3 million in the event of any loss occurrence as well. So.
That includes bodily injury and property. Okay. Thank you.
But, but anyone who is using the community center, even if there's no alcohol involved, if they're renting it for any purpose and there's damage that's done, they're responsible for that damage.
Right. But I mean, this is just something separate regarding alcohol and the likelihood that something could happen is probably increases. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No unfinished business. The next is land development, 33 Neal Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ed Murphy here tonight on behalf of Mike Meister and Kevin Riley of County Builders to hopefully conclude a four-year odyssey that began October of 2021 when we first met with Stephanie and her staff to talk about this property. We've been to seven planning commission meetings. This is, I think, the fifth appearance before your board. We've had countless meetings in between with staff and with the neighbors. And I think I'm happy to report that no neighbors are here tonight because I think we've got everybody feeling comfortable about the end result. So what's in front of you is a preliminary is final land development plan for 23 units on this five acre parcel off of Neal Drive. And as I alluded to, we've had many plan revisions, a lot of interaction with everybody. And I do think the plan's in a position where hopefully everyone feels comfortable moving forward. We were provided as a courtesy with a draft of a letter, if adopted by the board, which would outline the conditions attached in any approval. All those outlined conditions are acceptable to the applicant. So I think absent any other questions which Kevin and I could answer, hopefully the board feels the same way and we can move ahead.
Okay.
I have a question. So I know that we had to change the zoning on this, right? Correct. One of the issues, and I'm sorry that this, there's, this property borders Ferry Road and 313. And it's going to be probably purchased by people as like a maybe potentially a first house or families. I don't see any open space allotted for playground in this area at all.
I think Kevin can answer that question about, I don't know if the, Kevin come up and point out that issue that's been discussed previously.
Sure. The, what we talked about, the planning commission was to have a central courtyard. And it's kind of hard to see in the black and white. It's in that area and we have a 20 by 24 pavilion provoked, proposed. That's where the community mailboxes are going to go. We have park benches proposed and landscaping, crosswalks to and through it as well.
I see plantings on the diagram, the color diagram that we were provided in that courtyard area, like purple circles?
That's correct.
That's, I mean, how is a playground, I mean, how are kids supposed to play there?
It's, it's not necessarily a playground. It's more of a passive area and they're going to, it's more of a congregating area with the pavilion.
That, I was at that planning meeting when we talked about, I think I may even have been the one who also asked about having some kind of social space because I think the same conversation is probably going to be family homes. And when the neighbors did come, one of the things they talked about and expressed their concern was that kids were playing and families were together. So I'm not quite sure where the kids are going to go. A passive area to sit under pavilion is fine if a group of people want to get together, but I, I am concerned because that wasn't incorporated in any way. Is there supposed to be a certain amount of open space that was to be incorporated given this, this space? I thought open space was supposed to be part of this, this, the zoning. It's very dense.
Well, we proposed a fee in lieu of recreation area of $1,880 per lot. And that's what's in the, the resolution for approval.
Well, sorry, I thought the fee was in lieu of equipment and not space.
It's in the same section of the ordinance. It's a fee in lieu of open space or recre- or active recreation space.
Not, not every development has the opportunity to provide open space. Not every development has an opportunity to provide a, a playground. It's something that's desired, but, excuse me, but these guys have been working on this plan for four years now, you know, and, and it's gone through many iterations and through, as you said, seven meetings of the planning commission. And I, I think at this point, they've done all they can do with this property to provide, you know, a central place for the residents to gather. And I, it's, I think it would be impossible for them to take away that central place and make it into a park because you need the mailboxes, you need the ingress and egress across the parking lots and stuff. So like I said, not every plan can provide for everything. And I think they've done the best they can with this, this development. Just my thoughts.
Yeah. I mean, my thought is, you know, one less unit. I think open space is important specifically to that area because they're, they're, you know, it's 313 and Ferry Road. Where are they supposed to, where, if you have children, where are they supposed to go? And maybe not a playground, but at least some land for them to run around on, at least some space for them to, to ride a bike, to just play outside. And unless, it looks like unless they go to a neighbor's house, when, you know, a neighbor, I don't know, next door, but not on their property, they're not going to have it. They're going to have to be driven someplace. My two cents.
Yeah, that front yard, that front yard is just, is it just plantings? Is that correct? Where the swamp road is?
Question is again, I'm sorry.
In your pack.
For the front yard. That's a long swamp, sort of where the, your top, the top of the picture.
A strong majority of that is existing vegetation and trees to remain, which is what the, our township planner wanted to see us do. We do have a grass paver emergency access that's going out the top of that cul-de-sac. That's the double black line out to Neal Drive. So that would essentially be grass with, with pavers underneath of it.
How wide is the buffer from Teagan, Teagan Lane to the next property?
50 feet wide.
50 feet. So 50 feet is, is how, if, if, what would 50 feet look like in this? Would this be half of this or 50 feet?
50 feet, 50 feet's about 18 yards. 50 feet is about 18 yards.
Can you look at this room and like say, half of this is 50 feet? This might be 100 feet room?
10 yards, 50.
You can't.
It's probably... Three quarters of this room, yes, three quarters.
Right. And you... So there would be room along that runway there that they could have some space?
Yes, and a lot of that is existing vegetation to remain as well, which is what the neighbors asked for. On the other side of Teagan Lane, we've contemplated potentially some dog walks there. They don't show on the plan, but there is room on the upper side of Teagan Lane as well for some vertical, you know, areas. We saw that as a potential dog area.
Let's write on Ferry Road, though, correct?
No, no. Ferry Road is out here. I'm talking above Teagan Lane.
I'm going to add to this to that.
Parallel with the youth sports facility.
Okay. Any other questions?
And how many... Just to go back, these were three-bedroom, two-three-bedroom? Just for anybody who's listening...
They are. They're three-bedroom townhouses with a two-car garage, two-car driveway, two-story tall with... In the ground basements.
In the ground basements. Are any of them walkouts?
I think on the one side, we will have the opportunity for...
Daylight.
Either a walkout or a window in the basement.
Okay. I would move for the approval of the Philmont Properties' development of 33 Neal Drive, preliminary and final.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then...
All right, next on the agenda.
We have to do the planning module, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, planning module.
Yep, is the... Yep, that's next on the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the planning module for 33 Neal Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Oh, sorry, no.
No? Okay. All right, thank you very much. 1850 Turk Road driveway.
Why... I had a note on this one. Why do we have to change... What do they want to do? They want to change the zoning in order to provide this...
Did you set the plans on the computer? Did I open it up?
Yes.
Oh, you're there?
It's on the computer. Ed, are you going to put it... Pop it up back there or should he do it out here? He can do it out here.
Right there.
Supervisor Lyons, this is a bit convoluted.
Yes, thank you.
And I think we're about to get next. That's why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sean Duffy. I'm an attorney with Obermeyer here on behalf of Liz and Chris Bia, who are the property owners of 1850 Turk Road. We're representing them in relation to the proposed development of the property with a single-family detached dwelling. By way of brief background, they recently purchased the property. The lot was subdivided back in 2003. It's a flag lot, so it only has access through that narrow corridor that fronts along Turk Road. In that corridor, there's a bunch of different environmental resource protection areas. You have woodlands, steep slopes. I believe it runs through the Riparian Corridor Conservation District overlay, so it was a bit difficult to configure the driveway for this property. At the end of last month, the Bias received zoning relief from the protection ratios as it relates to the woodlands, along with steep slopes. We're also getting ready to file a conditional use application as it relates to a disturbance in the Zone 2 Riparian Corridor overlay district. The reason, however, we are here tonight is as a result of the township code as it relates to driveways. So the code mandates that a driveway width of 12 feet, and we are proposing an eight-foot driveway. This is under Section 83 TAC 2.8 of the township code, and so we are requesting, I guess for lack of a better term, a waiver from that to allow an eight-foot driveway. Sorry, that was a long way to get to that.
Yeah, waiver is better than modification.
Yeah, so with this proposal, essentially, we're... You have much less impervious coverage. It protects a bunch of the trees along that corridor, and it just kind of minimizes the project scope. But yeah, it's been pretty difficult to orient the driveway in an appropriate fashion, and this is kind of the final iteration that we feel works the best. We also have with us tonight Chris Lang of Carroll Engineering. He can answer some more of the technical questions that you may have as it relates to those protection areas.
Will two cars be able to pass one another or need... Or do they have to wait? Your turn.
They would... I believe they would have to wait, I mean, eight feet, but we'll get the expert here.
Well, that could be...
But it's just a... It's a single-family dwelling.
Yeah, but it still can make it difficult having dinner with...
Correct.
Let you out the driveway.
We are going to investigate some sort of pull-off lane specifically for that reason if there are two cars. It's probably going to be up towards the north side of the lot. It's pretty steep down where the flag lot is as well and adjacent to the property line, which is about right there. So we are investigating a pull-off zone. We haven't decided if we're going to do that in asphalt or gravel pave, which was an approved material in the original plan submission.
Well, I propose that we permit the waiver of the 10 feet or 12 feet to eight feet for this property, 850 Turk.
Is a waiver like that better suited to the zoning hearing board or to us?
They've already been to the zoning hearing board and got the relief. This is a standalone ordinance, so it's not part of zoning. It's not part of subdivision land development, and the only organ group in the township that can waive it is this board of supervisors.
Understood.
And it doesn't set a precedent for anything, correct?
No.
Yeah. And I mean, it makes it appropriate for this lot because they're going to reduce the amount of environmental impacts that exist on the lot from 2003.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too.
It's pretty brave to buy that. I know we...
All right. Next, we have the TD Bank agreement. Stephanie, do you want to?
Yes, this is something that Ken is recommending that we enter into with TD Bank so that we can utilize services related to positive pay. It helps reduce fraud with checks and, as the board knows, in the paying of bills and checks and processing. So I would ask for the board's consideration that we can work with TD Bank, who we bank with, to allow for this in our positive pay... Participate in their positive pay platform.
So this requires approval of the board, motion and second, the whole bit?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I move for the acceptance and approval of the cash management master agreement with TD Bank.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Zoning Hearing Board.
I would recommend that the Triumph Builders' application for 651 North Shaded Retreat, requesting a number of variances regard to the total site width, gross site area, required buffer for eventually a proposed subdivision, be left to the zoning hearing board.
Wow, all that stuff.
Yep.
Treasurers' Report.
Move for the approval of the Treasurers' Report for September 16, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list.
Move for the approval of the bills list for September 16, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any public comment on any items? Please come to the microphone, state your name and your municipality that you live in. They're great.
My name is Robert Self. I live at 965 Alms House. I don't know how familiar you are with a... I guess they're working on a subdivision and zoning variance for...
Can you move closer to the microphone?
Sure, it's... What is the address? I guess it's...
985 Alms House Road. That is correct.
And I was wondering if the township has taken a position on this.
We have sort of taken a position on this. It will be before the zoning hearing board, I believe, on September 29th. Here in this building, they're going to be using the caucus room because the planning commission is out here. We have sent a letter of concern to the zoning hearing board regarding the proposed lots out front being too small for the district of the R1A, which requires a two-acre minimum. The other lots they are proposing and any variances they have are of a size that would meet the current zoning, and it will be up to the zoning hearing board to see if they grant the relief necessary. And that is a quasi-judicial process that you are able to attend, able to make comment, also able to become a party to the proceeding if you so choose, that would allow you any appealable rights, if I'm using that terminology correctly. I'll ask the solicitor to correct me if I'm saying it incorrectly, but that's where we are at this point in time.
What is your concern?
My... I guess the question is myself and the other homeowners are if the township was going to send the solicitor to, I guess, be against this, for lack of a better word, just because this one lot is seven one-hundredths of an acre. It's just... It's going to make it turn into look like townhouses along Alms House.
And that's why we sent the letter in opposition to that. We are not sending the solicitor to this hearing, but we've already shared a letter with the zoning hearing board identifying the concerns that I, as the zoning officer, raised with the board of supervisors, and they concurred, and that's why we didn't want that three-quarters of an acre lots out front.
Yeah, it would just be stupid.
Yeah. It's very small for the two-acre minimums in that district.
Yeah, they have 10 acres.
But I understand that several of the homeowners in the area have gotten together and have your own solic... Have hired a solicitor, so they should advise you accordingly.
Yes, this is all just happening very fast, so it's just, you know, I think it was, what, two weeks ago? We got a notice on this, so this is all moving fast for us, but that's all. So as long as the township has kind of seen what we've seen, that this is a mess, so... Okay, that was my concern. Thank you.
Stephanie, so the zoning meeting's on September 29th. At what time?
Seven o'clock. They've all received notice directly.
Just for anyone who's listening.
Jeanette Self, 965 Alms House. What we wanted is for this township to send a person in support of their position in addition to their letter. We'd like physical representation that you are or you have concerns. That's what we are here to request.
So our deputy zoning officer and our director of code enforcement attends all the zoning hearing boards. He has a copy of the letter, and he will communicate with the zoning hearing board directly, the concerns that we've... The board has and I have regarding that.
So you do have...
We have staff that will be there. Yep, be there.
That was our... They attend all meetings, so they will be there. Thank you. You're so welcome.
Apparently, the builders are going around hitting... Seeing the older people trying to pick off different properties. And there's about 80 acres back there. I have 17 of those, and they're hitting the different people who are older, unfortunately. Talk about scams, but you know, it's their property. If they're going to sell, that's fine, but I just don't... I hate to see this pit patchwork of a mess, for lack of a better... If they want to divide it into two-acre lots per the code, then that's... I can't do anything about that.
That's right.
Right.
But for you to... For them to be getting smaller lots makes it a much bigger development in a small space.
And that's why we sent the... Two of the three, four lots proposed are of the minimum requirement for the district, and that's why the two out front that are below that is why we sent that letter of concern.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay. You mind saying your name and your municipality again? Thanks.
Mary Ann Davies, Doylestown Township. First, I would like to comment regarding the cameras on the sports court. Is it my understanding that right now, there's no cameras and they're...
You know, you heard it spoken to earlier, but before the last budget session meeting, I had a conversation with Stephanie to check with our insurance company whether we would get a credit to our premium if we had cameras. So that's already been in the works, so yes.
So there will be?
Yeah, well, yeah. There will be.
And then are there cameras at the new bathrooms for Kids Castle?
Well, there aren't now.
Okay. You're not finished yet.
But are they planned for the...
The proposal for the cameras included cameras in the sport courts and cameras on the building for the bathrooms. So there's no cameras on the bathrooms currently. However, there are cameras on the amphitheater that point in that direction. As a matter of fact, during construction, a little bit of vandalism, so we turned one of the cameras that points to the bathroom building. But so that proposal is for both facilities.
Will those cameras be hardwired or will they be... They're not going to be the solar cameras, correct?
They're hardware, correct.
Hardware, thank you.
The other comment is... Excuse me, has to do with the e-bikes, and I didn't realize that that was going to come up, but that was one of the reasons I came here. I've had a couple of close calls just in our neighborhood in Doylestown Hot. It scares the heck out of me. One child, you know, so middle school age, came whipping around a corner, and thank God I was paying attention, and I stopped cold. But not only was she a younger child on an e-bike going very fast and didn't stop at a stop sign, but she was also on her phone. No helmet and barefoot. So I'm really frightened about that because I've had encounters, you know, I've seen them in, you know, the kids, young kids in the borough on 611, crossing the road from Wawa into our development. And thank you very much for that informational thing. I did share it with some neighbors that had kids, you know, whether or not they had e-bikes, whatever. But I would also suggest that that great informational piece be sent to all the schools and the school district, the hospital, the emergency room, and any pediatric offices.
Yeah, like I said, it's in a digital form, so I can send it out, and we have plenty of contacts with all those organizations. We can certainly do that. Pretty simple.
Yeah, because I think it would be also during like back-to-school nights or any... I don't know if they've already had them anymore, but to have those flyers in hand to send to... For parents to pick up. No one knows the difference between the e-bike and the pedals and the not pedals, but also if there isn't currently a citation, I think we're going to have to do that. I really... It was... It's been frightening there. You know, I... God forbid, it's going to happen. It's going to happen. And they're on the streets, they're on the roads, they're younger children, they're, you know, they think it's a great toy, and the parents probably unsuspectingly, you know, buy it, but don't know what's going on with that. But anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comment? All right. Move for adjournment.
All right, second. All right, all in favor? Adjourned. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.